Chairman Lewis Junior.
Here.
Mr. Larkins.
Present.
Mr. Adams.
Present.
Mr. Babbitt.
Here.
Mr. Marlowe Junior. Attorney Ward. We are forward.
Mr. Duffield. Thank you, Mr. Duffield.
Yes, sir.
Most gracious ever.
I will thank you for this day.
Thank you for all the good assistance you provided for us. Thank you for the beautiful weather we had on past that year. Bless each person here today and lead us in guidance and help us to do the things that would be pleasing your side. We ask these prayers in Jesus' name and the paper.
Amen.
May the President be with you, God, our United States of America, and to your brother, which stands on your mission, on your God, universal, with liberty and justice for all.
They're rough, so the commission follows here and the attorney is here. Gentlemen, I get a motion to adjourn today.
For those being, those being items, we discussed, we added to the agenda, we approve for three items, two items.
Gentlemen. So, I got a motion back to Mr. Larkins. Bill, second.
Second.
Back to Mr. Adams, okay?
This is a discussion, yes? Uh, this, you know, the recessed meeting, there's a budget hearing, a meeting, plus we have a mission meeting. I mean, how did we come out about last meeting? Came out and adjourned, uh, I mean, in order to pass a budget and pass these things, this... How did we end that last meeting that we were in, our official meeting? Were we motioned to adjourn the meeting, uh, did we recessed, uh, hearing or anything like that? What I'm saying from our last meeting.
Right.
I'm trying to determine if we in a meeting or just a budget hearing, that we gonna have to establish a meeting to take these actions.
Right.
That's what I'm trying to determine.
Yeah.
How did we end the last meeting?
I think we adjourned.
I think we adjourned, so, 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 we just gonna have a budget hearing here, so these are hearings, it's not an official commission meeting, it's just hearings. Now, now, give us some clarity on that.
I don't think you, if you're not, if you're not in a meeting, you can't approve the budget.
But I mean, I just gotta state as hearing, but I mean, it's a budget meeting, meeting for approval.
I know, but is it, is it a call meeting or if we adjourn the meeting from a regular meeting and it was adjourned, it was not continued now, whatever, to come back and recess, is I guess the right term? Then we're not in a meeting.
But it was discussed, we had made it, what we did, Jason was gonna meet at nine o'clock on Tuesday, then we said ten o'clock, we gonna have a budget meeting. On which they had talked about, how we gonna establish it? Uh, going at the, at the end of that last meeting, we did establish that, Jason beat on this was two, two to nine, and nine to, and then the budget hearing for approval Wednesday, on the twenty eighth, at ten. Yeah, I understand that, yeah, but, but if we adjourned, the meeting was over, is what I'm saying, and then, so, you know, we got, we come back and meet and do different things, but we gotta come back into an official meeting to take some action. Right. If we adjourned it, that's not, and that's what I'm thinking, I'm telling you, you can speak to that.
Well, I mean, I think you're correct, I mean, if the meeting was adjourned and not recessed, and we got it from the, uh, uh, protocol to establish both, we got to be in a regular meeting. I don't know about being confused, I thought the meeting from the first of the month was recessed till today to vote on the budget, and I could be wrong, I'm talking about the regular scheduled meeting from the second Monday.
The minister reflected it was adjourned or recessed, that's what I'm saying, you know, we're gonna get that.
I don't know about recessing instead of... Have we opened bids yesterday, Jason? It was on the twenty seventh?
It's the third.
Uh, that's correct, okay, so that wasn't a meeting, I just talked to bids. The question then comes from our regular scheduled meeting, the first of the month, I thought the meeting was recessed till today to take action on the budget, but I keep, I don't have any faith, I mean, demonstrate it, say. It wouldn't have been recessed from yesterday if we actually, recessed from the, the regular scheduled meeting, first Monday in the month. I don't think...
Can you wish that it was? Can't, I mean, I mean, this gas, fuel bid needs to be approved, you know, because, and that was one of the things we did discuss, was coming back, you know, at the same time to approve these bids, so that couldn't be incorporated into the budget, you know, at the same time, you know, moving forward into this new budget. Uh, I mean, there's also asphalt and rock bids on there as well, too, but gas and fuel would be the most, the most, uh, pressing issue.
Don't misunderstand, don't misunderstand, if we recessed till today, we can amend the budget to vote on these bid items. That's not the issue, the issue is whether when we recessed, when we met on Monday, the second Monday in the month, did we recess till today or did we adjourn at that meeting? Cause if, if we recessed till today, which I thought we did, I'm not saying that, I don't care, then we can certainly amend the budget to take up Jason's bids, that's not a problem. But if, if we gonna vote on the budget, we got to be in a meeting to vote, we can't be in a work session like that.
Now, I know, we've had, I mean, this is our third meeting, I mean, outside that a budget hearing we had last week, we know we met on the twelfth, it was a regular meeting, then we recessed it, uh, to the fifteenth, we took some action, and out of that fifteenth, before we had the budget hearing last week, did we recess?
Did we recess on the fifteenth?
That's what I'm thinking.
Well, I, I...
Again, we gotta be clear on that, to take action, I mean, we just need to be clear on this, that's all, we just need to be clear, they can check the tape and see if we recessed or we adjourned. Cause if we adjourned, all that, this, uh, notified, present, we have a meeting to take this action, if we recessed, if we didn't, if we adjourned, we'd have a meeting. When did... Can we check that, the minutes, can we just check if we have it or not?
When did you know that Jason was bringing these bids back? When did you know that?
We discussed that, we discussed that the last, probably the first week, uh, of the month.
Right, cause I know, uh, Jason brought the, uh, the bids to the table for me, and I think y'all decided to table them, not renew them, and that's when they recessed those. Jason bringing up the bids back, along with, uh, covenants and hot things and all of that. But when y'all recessed back, y'all didn't discuss it then, because when y'all recessed back, I, I, I didn't, I came late, I, I had ran late. Wow, look, so, so, did y'all discuss it before then? Did y'all have to discuss this on the field? Then, we didn't recess on the... We just adjourned, I think.
The meeting on the fifteenth?
Well, we just adjourned, I think we did.
He was outright adjourned.
Well, I give you chat, we're, we're the issue, we gotta be clear on approving this budget, we gotta approve this budget, capture this, uh, you know, uh... Yeah, well, this, this here, this here ain't got nothing to do, I mean, we can go on and, and, and do our budget, I mean, we just gotta come back to this, I mean, if it is. And you have to approve a budget in an official meeting, and that's what we're gonna make sure, we have a difference from yesterday.
You know, if we recessed, uh, I think we adjourned.
Got you, I had you here on fifteen, you were just trying to say, well, I'll give you the tape. Yeah, the tape's right here, we got a study list and a list of names that, uh, cause it's all there, next time, yeah, the list don't be that, this is, the next week's approved.
This make wasn't chosen on the twelfth, okay? This make here wasn't chosen on the twelfth of our regular meeting?
I understand, but we, if we recessed from the twelfth to the fifteenth.
Right.
Okay, and then, so now on the fifteenth, we can recess from the fifteenth till today?
That make wasn't established. That make wasn't established.
Okay, so, you say we adjourned, so the issue is not the budget, the issue at this point in time is whether we're in a regular meeting or not?
When was the last time we had a hearing, a budget hearing?
A budget was last week, but that was...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, last...
This make wasn't established last Wednesday.
Right, right, right.
And it wasn't a meeting, was it a hearing approved?
It was a hearing that we...
To approve a budget, to pay.
Right.
But it wasn't...
So, you should be in a regular meeting, was it book the size that we would have?
Yeah.
Today?
Yeah, I got it posted everywhere.
You got, that we would have this today?
Right, mm-hmm, it's out there, it's in front of us.
But as long as that's required, if we post, if we're gonna have a meeting.
Yeah.
Uh, and...
Where, what did the post say? The post said that, uh, what kind of mission we're holding, uh, public, I mean, is budget meeting, uh, September twenty, can the commission change? There's an I, a B, or some F, a H, or some F, or a G, it's on the front of the board now. We need this place. So, does it, it's not as a budget meeting, but not as a, not as a commission meeting? Right, but I mean, maybe I should have stated it a different way, but yeah.
Does it say hearing or...
Right.
If it says meeting, I think you're fine, cause you've notified the public, you have been informed of meeting, uh, and that's the main thing, is if we adjourned and we, we published notice, that we're having a meeting. And I think at this, at this point in time, uh, then... I would think we could go, you know, if, if, and I don't, it's not really...
Say it back.
You published, uh, a notice that we were having a meeting.
Right.
So, if the public was notified, it's been published, then I think we are within our legal bounds to take it from, and you can, uh, I would think that either, this is not a word, whatever, a hearing.
Right.
As a, as a meeting.
Yeah, maybe I should just change the wording, but I just, that's gotta prove, it's, it's, we gotta prove that we're here.
All right, I've got a meeting, you got a real meeting.
Maybe I just need to change the wording on that budget, I mean...
As long as you post it, Patrick, you gotta use the term meeting, I think we're fine. It was within time.
Well, we need to see the posting and see it to be sure, I mean, because, uh, we need to know about it, and we do it. This stuff comes back in a form that has to be done correctly, you know, it's the same meeting, it's the same area, or what like I said, and stuff like that, and if we adjourned, then they can go back in, I think, if we, in fact, we adjourned, then they don't recess. He's wanting to go, man. It's gonna be out of line. Yeah, he forgot. It's on the door right, say it, please. Yeah, but it's on this door right here, wait.
As far as attorney is concerned, he cleared, we're in a meeting.
Gentlemen, we have motion to mean and...
So, Mr. Larkins, the player, also, I said, I want to say no to this person, but, uh... The board was...
I'm sorry.
What about the discussion?
Uh, great, uh, I'm not old, most here, uh, apparently into the budget.
Okay, uh, ladies and gentlemen, we did discuss the budget thoroughly last week, uh, as far as, uh, what adjustments to departmental budgets and overall budget to the county. Uh, we did, like I said, make some adjustments based on, uh, the commission recommendation, as far as recommendations from the department here situation. So, basically, what I have for you is basically a projected budget following projected revenues and projected expenditures for the fiscal year, and I will go down the line. As you see, the asterisk is below the three asterisks, showing the adjustments that I made out to talk with you all and department heads, or what adjustments are added to this overall budget now, uh, I can read those, uh, the bottom first before going through the budget. Uh, the adjustments, adjustments out of the September twenty first, twenty two budget here, uh, we reduced revenue commission for professional services to three thousand dollars, we increased public highway traffic revenue by three thousand dollars, we increased miscellaneous revenue by fifteen hundred, we increased, uh, revenue commissioners refund by ten thousand dollars, you came in pretty high, at a hundred eighty-six thousand, and we had budget one seven, so we moved it up another ten thousand dollars as a revenue source to the county. Uh, we also came in, kind of, when I went back and looked at the ABC store licenses, that increased, so we did move that up by another five thousand. However, we get down here to, uh, sideways department, now sideways department, as you see, is include principal interest payment, total one eight seven five sixty-one principal, twelve thousand one ninety-two, total expenditure budget increased by a hundred ninety-nine thousand seven fifty-three from sideways. However, in the scheme of this budget, I'm talking with Dave, uh, Bryant from Community Banking Trust to see if he can extend this loan out three years, so we can only budget for the interest. But right now, you see, what I have in the budget as far as revenue is the basic revenue of eleven hundred fifty customers, thirty dollars a can, uh, and also, uh, contingency line item, which is, I mean, transfer and general fund, to meet the, uh, total budget of, uh, here, sideways, five twenty-four, as opposed to five hundred twenty-one and projected expenditures. Uh, so I'm just gonna go down the budget here, so I'm looking at the purposes of the public, uh, general fund, we projected two million four hundred forty-one thousand, one hundred forty-nine thousand in revenue, projected expenditures, two thousand, two million one hundred seventy-eight thousand eight thirty-nine. Tobacco tax, revenue projected fifty-seven thousand, expenditures projected fifty-four thousand seven hundred fifty. Gas tax, projected revenue, one million six hundred eighty-nine thousand twenty dollars, as opposed to expenditures, one million six sixty-one four forty-two. Uh, public buildings, road and bridges fund, projected revenues of eight hundred thirty-four thousand eighty dollars, projected expenditure is seven hundred six thousand seven hundred thirty-four. Public highway traffic fund, revenue is thirty-seven thousand five hundred, expenditures thirty-seven thousand. Capital improvement fund, projected revenue two hundred thirty thousand three hundred, projected expenditures two hundred twenty-nine thousand five hundred. Free R gas tax fund, projected revenue is eight hundred eighty thousand fifty dollars, projected expenditure is eight hundred sixty thousand one hundred fifteen dollars. Services material fund, seventy-five dollars, projected expenditure is zero, that's a, a fund that we receive, uh, based on extracting natural resources, play, minerals, whatever, we get a percentage of that back to, uh, the county from the state for those truckers that, uh, haul those natural resources, and it's a small portion that we get every year, so, uh, we just go ahead and budget it, but usually, counties with significant service material fund revenues, they go ahead and, and throw those, uh, funds toward road projects or economic development, but since ours is so ministry is minute, we just leave that there every year, we do collect maybe sometimes a hundred, a hundred twenty dollars, but, I mean, so we just leave that there, uh, uh, unbudgeted as far as expenditure side. Uh, reappraisal fund, two hundred twenty-six thousand revenue, projected expenditures two hundred thirteen one fifty-nine. Industrial sales tax fund, six hundred two thousand six seven sixty-eight forty-four, projected expenditures two fifty-nine one seventy-seven. Excuse me, uh, jail tax fund, two hundred ninety thousand dollars projected revenue, projected expenditures two eighty-nine five ninety-three. Average park fund, thirteen thousand five hundred, projected revenue, twelve thousand nine hundred twenty, projected expenditures. Tourism fund, six thousand dollars revenue projected, fifty-seven hundred projected expenditures. County rebuild fund, six hundred fifty thousand dollars projected, revenue, six hundred twenty-five thousand projected expenditures. Federated exchange funds, four hundred thousand, projected revenue and four hundred thousand projected expenditures, that money is fixed every year, and it comes down to four hundred thousand dollars, uh, every year. Rescue fund truck, fifteen hundred dollars projected revenue, eleven hundred projected expenditures. American rescue plan, we only budgeting thousand dollars, which is interest as a crewing in that account, we have no other revenue source coming in, uh, but we do have projected, uh, expenditures going out. Now, this is entailed in the final request of eight hundred seventy-eight thousand plus the consulting fees. Sideways fund, we project five hundred twenty-four thousand, that includes transfer in from the general fund, as well as the, uh, projected estimated customer collection of eleven hundred fifty a month, thirty dollars a can. Uh, projected revenue, I mean, expenditures, five twenty-one, five hundred twenty-one thousand, three dollars, like I say, included in that number right now is the, uh, overall sideways principal interest payment for the sideways truck, including principal interest, but like I said, we're gonna get with Dave Bryant from Community Banking Trust, see if we can, uh, extend that, uh, that loan out to three years and only incorporate the interest for the fiscal year. Access to land sales fund, uh, projected revenue fifty-five thousand, projected expenditures five thousand. Judiciary fund, five thousand revenue, two four hundred expenditures. District attorney fund, eighty-five hundred, projected revenue, eight thousand, projected expenditures. Workday check fund, four hundred fifty dollars, projected revenue, three hundred dollars, projected expenditures. Motor vehicle technology fund, probate funds, fifteen hundred dollars projected revenue, and we project fifteen hundred dollars in expenditures. Uh, probate here, motor vehicle training fund, one thousand dollars projected revenue, one thousand dollars projected expenditures. Land site to housing fund, revenue commission REIT, four hundred fifty dollars projected revenue, three hundred fifty projected expenditures. Revenue commission discretionary fund, five hundred dollars projected revenue, no expenditures reflected there. And we also have, uh, I'm gonna count motor vehicle registration title and tech fund, which is just also, which is ten dollars, and we project no, uh, expenditures, so overall, budget, looking at projected revenues, eight million nine hundred fifty-six thousand, three hundred fifty-two dollars, forty-four cents, against the projected expenditures, eight million nine hundred fifty-four thousand six eighty-two, which gives us a county fiscal year pose budget surplus of one thousand six hundred seventy dollars forty-four cents. As y'all see, this budget is really tight, you know, I mean, we've tried to max down to the pin, I mean, it is tight, and, and you see we're working with here, it's not a huge question. So, uh, that was my presentation, I'm sorry, uh, projected budget for fiscal twenty-three.
Question, chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I mean, just to the commission, you know, on Monday, I, you know, I, I came in, I looked at the financials and stuff, I asked about the regular funds, we don't have any excess money anywhere, it's very, very slim, and, and, and looking at this with only one thousand six hundred seventy dollars forty-four cents, I mean, uh, I, I, I don't know where to look, I mean, but, uh, but budget this there, uh, you, you, the association, you know, suggests, you know, having, uh, you know, a better path than that, a thousand dollars, you know what I mean, looking at, and, and we have heard from the engineering department and others that were asking about, uh, increases in salaries and other requests we had, but show me the money, there's absolutely no money here to look at anything, you know, do we need to make some cuts anywhere, to provide for anything, the other things we wanna look at? Or we just go forward and work as we go, just, just work in progress and, and just move forward, but, I mean, just so everyone knows, there's nothing, absolutely nothing, here without sixteen hundred dollars, uh, in the budget, that, that look, any further than what we're looking at. Anyone have any comments on that, uh, commission, anything like that, I mean, uh, how do we go on forward for this next fiscal year?
Can I say something, chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, you know, I did, I did bring that forward, uh, I know the budget as a whole, uh, you know, may be tight, uh, I talked to Patrick about adjusting some things that are on the budget, we're usually well within the budget, uh, um, as far as some equipment, removing some from that, maybe putting toward salaries, uh, maybe hiring another person eventually, uh, toward that, so, uh, you know, you see the whole, yes, the whole is tight as far as the, the, the whole budget, but, uh, you know, as far as individual budget, we, we usually come in well within budget, and, uh, and I expect to, you know, this year, figure for next year, and, uh, I brought those recommendations to you, uh, you know, maybe there's something, I know some of them, uh, maybe monitored and see farther along into the year, but I know that issue was brought up to about the pay scale, and, uh, I feel like that's been, you know, kicked a little bit down the road, at some point, I feel like maybe we can get that done and, and, and have a little better guidelines with that, cause, cause right now, it's, uh, you know, really certifications and, and stuff like that, I don't feel like are necessarily rewarded as they should be. I brought up the, I brought up the assistant engineer, I passed out the, uh, sheet there listing all the engineers, everyone, the county engineer salary in the whole state, doesn't show what you counted, but we, and all the assistants, and, uh, he is, is, I think, third up from the bottom, and that's looking at probably primarily last year's, uh, you know, current salaries, not going into this next year, uh, you know, we've been here two years, and got certain certifications, uh, went through the two-week bridge school, will become certified soon, is, is, uh, you know, with that, uh, you know, it's hard to get people to, in here to work, you know, to, to fill some of these spots, but it's even tougher when you have to fill a spot that's requiring an engineering degree or something like that, uh, you know, I asked for that increase on his salary, the state pays for fifty percent of his salary, uh, and, and I think that's, get good people on board, need to try to keep, I mean, he's, he's almost probably the, the very bottom of the whole state as far as assistant engineers go, uh, and, or lose, you know, I said, that, that would set us back a lot, um, I understand what the chair says about different things, but coming here with a, with a state that requires four-year engineering degree, requires you to have engineering certification, in, in terms of certifications, passing, uh, these tests and stuff like that, that, that's, uh, that's something that's not as easily found, and when you find somebody like that, I feel like y'all would do a pretty good job, at least to try to keep them, you know, in reasonable, uh, pay rate there, so I still, I still push for that, and all these other guys too as well, but I realize that, that salary, pay rate may have to be worked out, you know, in the meantime.
I'm not responding to what you just tried, the assistant engineer, two years, I was looking for him to be able to do some of this work that we, uh, are still using consulting engineers to do the inspection on these roads and improve the salary and find ways to help with that salary, and after two years period, I was expecting that to be done, uh, uh, much sooner than that, and still, again, people having paid products, be going and hiring outside engineers to, uh, come in and do these inspections on these roads, those inspections would certainly have helped, maybe, in bringing that money into that, but at the same time, I would like to see everyone on a cost of living increase, everything's what I want, every employee and everybody else, it's the money, and that's why I say, we might have to, uh, uh, trim line what we doing and find some cost-cutting measures to bring some more money to this budget, we not, our revenue's not increasing that much, you know, on our end, and from the last five years I've been here, everything's going up by, there's insurance, everything going up on everybody else, and every contractor, I don't expect anything to come down, so everybody, uh, that's employed by us, uh, certainly, uh, benefit from a cost of living or something without a doubt, but the money's not, and showing the money, how we can save some money, that's what we gotta get busy about, put some money in the pot to have some money to do something with, I just, that's why, over the, uh, last few days, I said, there's just nothing there, what can we do to even consider anything until we find some money, to create some money, there's no money from what's been presented, there's nothing we can do, present something with some money, and then we can consider something else, and replace the raise, present something with some money and where, power money is that to get the raises from.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
And what you said, Jason, I guess what would help us, or help me, okay, as a commissioner, I understand what you said about assistant engineer, if you could just, obviously sell our assistant engineer, but in terms, I know how, but you know how valuable he is to you, but I don't think the commission body knows how valuable he is and what he does to do for our county, I think that's the missing link that I'm missing, uh, at this point, a lot of us are very profitless, but with that being said, we take that into consideration, but based off the recommendation, what our ministry has worked on tirelessly about our budget, it is tight, it is not there for anything right now, so, that's my discussion on that, my point, I, he's worked on it, and this is, this is the fiber, and for us to go against his fiber right here, I, I think it, you know, we can visit later on down the line, but we need to prove what he is looking for. And for us to go against his fiber right here, I I think it, you know, we can visit later on down the line, but we need to prove what he is looking for in front of us today. So with that being said, Chairman, no more discussion. I make motion to approve uh this uh budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three.
Commissioner, Mr. Johnson? We have the motion by Commissioner Marlowe to approve this budget. We have a second.
Second?
Second, Commissioner Galloway, on favor. And both motion here.
Can I say one thing, Chair?
Yes, sir.
Uh, you know, I understand your point there too, but but there is money within our budget for payrolls. May not be in any other budget, but there is some that are set aside there uh for that. So to say this, you know, it's not there, that's that's not entirely true.
It hasn't been challenged with. I mean, you say it's there, but I haven't seen it in in the discussion with anything, and you know, this is what I see.
My guys, who want, who want to go forward with that?
Yeah, I mean, you got a summary there in front of you. I guess, you know, think you get approved just off the floor. Uh and you also have tabulation sheets there. Uh, you know, first item is gasoline and fuel, uh items be awarded to made distributed. Next item, new riprap and stone, recommended bid be awarded to hard rock fuel for those items in one of my five, number four, five, seven, seventy-eight, eight, twenty-five B. Fast one riprap, plastic riprap, rusted old material type B. Uh and then those remaining items be awarded to bulk materials. Uh, the last item, asphalt, hop mix, coal mix, recommended coal mix items be awarded as advanced asphalt products. But my two is planned hop mix B is be awarded to wire grass construction. Uh that's my recommendation of those items.
Chairman?
Chairman, we're receiving only one bid for made distributed for fuel. I I I'll make a motion that we accept the bid uh gasoline and fuel presented for made distributed.
That's motion.
Made distributed.
That's motion by Commissioner Galloway through made without gasoline fuel resources. Well, that's uh, second by Commissioner Martin, on favor.
All right.
Chairman, we're doing these second. We're doing this, Mr. Commissioner. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we recommend the bid award to hard rock fuel, uh ripraps and stones.
That's motion by Commissioner Marlowe, we have second. Second, I think I put this down on favor.
All right.
And both, both here.
There's also portion that riprap and stone, well, some of the items were what, you know, are committed to bulk materials, that's on the foot.
I mean, uh.
But that portion of those were uh ordered to bulk in, a portion to hard rock B and steam.
That motion to approve that. So, super. Motion by uh Marlowe, second by Commissioner Martin, Commissioner Martin, on favor.
All right.
And both here.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Commissioner, I'd like to add to the agenda, I'd like to add this to the agenda. I spoke with uh Wiregrass, who was doing the construction out of Highway.
We got one more idea? Chairman, I make a motion that we uh award asphalt, asphalt cop mix coal mix uh to advanced asphalt products and business plant cop mix be awarded to the wire grass construction.
That's motion by Commissioner Marlowe, we have second.
Sir.
Second by, down, on the favor.
All right.
Both here.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to add to the agenda, uh, our contract, uh, we got to meet it. Wire, Wiregrass Construction is uh researching the roads, County Road Fifty-two, Sixty-One, and Sugar Harris Road. I spoke with them, contractors are in, in. But let's add it to the agenda, if we can discuss this and maybe make a motion, uh, expanding our current bid, same cost for Wiregrass Construction, we do some additional roads, uh that's in the five being, within our project range, in the five being of the project. I would make a motion to add, uh, add to uh the contract, the di- uh three additional roads.
To the A to the?
No, to to the B and.
The B and.
Already had going.
I got you. Their precaution, by Commissioner Galloway, to a bid, this agenda to add. We understand.
With the turn. I. You got to get these roads, you got to search specs and get them. And I don't, as far as, and then they then bid, and as the number came back, and it was voted on and approved. And I've, and I'm assuming you know what you.
I discussed this, I have some better understanding, I know what you're talking about.
The, what is the, the amount of the extended contract if you, if you know?
I don't know the amount, but you can extend the contract at the same price that they did it, they got the bid on this, on the same tonnage and everything, and to, 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 to add to it. Now, this is coming from Wiregrass, I I I think Jason can add to that. But uh you got the contract and uh some more work you want to do at the same price, you can do it at the same price, you can push the price at the, for the same ton of and everything.
Let me say this, let me say this. I think if you were going, this is what I'm saying. If you were going to do five miles of road X Y Z at so much mile, and you wanted to go to seven miles on that same road, maybe. But if you're going to go to a, an entirely different road that may have different specifications as to what you're looking at. I would think, I think we're going to have to re-bid it. I don't think you can extend the bid for one road, from County Road One to County Road Two, and I'm just using that as an example. Uh, I think you'd be in violation of the bid law. But if you were going to uh extend, and I, and I may be wrong there. But if you were going to say, well, we were only doing half of Sugar Harris Road, we're now going to do the other half. And while they're there, they're going to do it at the same cost per foot of yard or whatever, maybe. But I think if you're going to move to an entirely different road, I think you got, I think you got to be.
Well, that's what I understand, but I, but when I already explained that, I explained the roads, I explained what the situation was. I said, we got the equipment here, we got County Road Forty-two right here, Fifty-three right now, Twenty-nine, Fifty right here, plus the roads. And what we have to go through the bidding process, and I'm talking to Wiregrass now, you know, with the fancy guys. And he said, this is how, we could do that, we write that, and we can get this done, how we moving the equipment. And see, we know how hard it is to get equipment, we got the money, we got the projects identified, this five million dollars. And now we got the papers, and any way we can do this, because papers and 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 looking, just using the vision. The legislature gonna go there and come back with some of the money, and whether we get them or not, papers are gonna be used, we can't get papers. We got a two and a half year timeframe to do what we need to do. We got everything on the ground, all the ingredients. Let's not miss an opportunity to go ahead and do this and bid the other roads and start bidding them. We're gonna have a problem, I've been busting my chops, asking folks, help us find someone to bid on these projects and do this work. Nothing comes to mind over almost two years. Now, here we got something in hand, on the line, if there's any way to do it, any way to do it. We need to go ahead and tell them, go and bid these roads and go with this project, and bid the others on out and and do it, if you're gonna do it. And he said, at the same tonnage and the same bridge and everything that they doing at, they could do this. Now, that was his version of it. I got the number here to the local engineer up at Aladot. I can call him to see what he think about this to give us movement, and know if there's anything that Aladot does. Money we borrowed is bad by Aladot, we're going to get these projects done. So now, I can call him, we can get out of here, but there's a problem, we can't do it. But if we, we can do it, Commissioner, we need to go ahead and do this, we got what we've been looking for. Contract on the ground, right in sight of these roads right there, and the same was said, if we, if bidding comes back, and just like hours, shirts and everything going up, it's gonna go up on these folks out here working. We not gonna get anything any cheaper than what we got today. So if we could, same price, same tonnage and everything, let's get it done, it's not gonna be any cheaper uh next year, year and a half from now.
But then we, you're not, you're not.
I just want to just say this, you know, if we, we need to get the association to see if we, you know, buy.
Give it to Aladot, I got you.
No, 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 I'm trying to, we, this, this is a, this here is a legal matter, could we do it or could we not? Aladot, they gonna tell you yes, because they were wanting.
No, no, Aladot, not Aladot, I'm not a, the transportation, Aladot no more money. They direct us, this is the local state local transportation engineer, the bureau chief. We've been talking about this, Fred, we, we got the communication going about this five million dollars, what time we have to spend.
I'm talking about the contractor going to want it, so we can tell you, we can tell you, we need to do it. But we need to go about it legally, we need to get a association that has to do this then to, you know, to.
But whoever we need to get, we got somebody here, we need to get what we need.
Something we need, yeah, we need to do it today, but we, we can't, that's, we can go home. And that's when we can go home today.
The money's been approved, the road's been approved, might have, just add to it and get it done. We already approved the money, we already approved it, the roads, they been approved, the money's been approved, and just somebody to do it, you know, uh, and just somebody's here.
Let me, Chris.
I don't want to miss opportunity.
Let me say this, I agree with every word you said. From a business perspective, it makes total sense. Not, not, not to me. The problem is not Aladot, not the association, you gonna have to get by the auditors. Did you bid this project? No, we just, we just made a good business decision. I don't been down this road to talk to Galloway, done his thing, I mean, Doc made the best move I saw. Save money, got a lot better tractor, whole deal. We got written up because we didn't bid a tractor. And the specs that Doc had uh on the tractor, he bought one directly from a dealer, much better than what he wanted. And we got written up because we didn't have a paper trail, we didn't bid a project. It's not going to be the association, it's not going to be Aladot. It makes total business, good sense, save county money. But I learned from that process we went through, the bid is not to save money. The bid is not to get the best price. The bid is to create a paper trail for the auditors to follow. And so, and y'all make sense out of that, it don't make no business sense. But that's the world we in. And so, the call if it's one to be made, needs to go to the auditors. But I'm going to tell you what, I'm going to tell you to start with, did you bid the project? Then if you didn't bid it, you can't do it. So, but you right, you did right in everything you said.
You right, you gotta follow the bid.
And 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 I'm just saying.
You gotta follow the bid.
But I'm in there now, but you got to bid it.
Well, I, I guess with the uncertainty, I'll just investigate and see what the bid law is here on this.
You need to call the auditors, especially, I don't know who the last caller we had down here. Call the auditors, and I, I have them, if the auditors say it's good to go.
If it be done, I think we need to do it. We can't do it if we can't do it.
But it ain't association of Aladot, you got to satisfy, you got to satisfy the auditors.
I think they'll put you in the right direction, this guy here, who's state local transportation engineer for the state Aladot.
Until we get, until we get clarity.
And then we just need to come back, we don't need to let these, if we do this, we letting everybody down, costing more money. We let these contractors get out, they willing to go ahead and do this. If we allow that to happen, it's on us, it ain't on nobody else. And they just look down the road two or three years, and now, oh, you did these roads in three years, and then they're not done, and and we up against the wall, and people tell this type. Cars up every gate riding these roads, we need to get them as soon as we can. Because every day, there's wheelbears and trucks going out, and they can put on light cars, riding these roads. These roads need to be fixed as fast as possible.
Give it everything else, sir. Mr. Reed, probate. Jason, uh, great question. Chairman, I'm trying to create a car, I'm trying to discuss that today. But while I'm in the work right on there, just, I didn't know if it was, with Mr. Reed, if she has some light on that. If he want adjourned and then make a concern. Well, I make a motion to adjourn.
Well, there's a couple of things I I I wanted to just mention, you know, before we adjourn, let's keep talking uh one-on-one. And and in real brief, you know, uh, we talked about uh, we made a policy, man, we can get back to it, there's something that we need. Because I hear folks, I'm here some things that we need some direction on, you know, uh, uh, time frame, folks' workers, learning. We just need a policy, man, period, you know what a policy, we need to look for a planning grant, uh, to do some planning for both counties, there might be grants out there. We need to be looking for a planning grant, maybe see if they get some money to fund the grant, we don't have any money in our budget. So we need to be looking for a, a planning grant. And the maintenance on our garbage trucks, we need to call them and see if they provide the maintenance, what we have to do to stay within the maintenance policy, you know, for our, for our mortgages and stuff. That, we need to call, uh, we need the gentleman, we have both trucks from the same company, if they want to provide the maintenance on these trucks and check them, uh, uh, what do we have to do to keep these trucks maintained? And uh, we had an issue about a little older from Miss Cooper's kid. And Mr. Doc, Mr. Larkin brought it up, you know, cardboard boxes out, we gotta use discretion, I think, gentlemen, but that's, we got policies that we following. But I think we need to have some discretion, you know, uh, on, on picking up the trash and leaving some stuff behind, and she would have to direct her staff to that. Let me use some discretion and satisfy this customer, we want everybody to get on the garbage service, we don't want no begging, you got a little something here, pick it up, you know, they, use discretion, they know what to do and what not to do, the new abusing us. I think we need to discuss uh that discretion, you know, whilst you see it. Make sure we have ample helpers so we don't get caught without helpers, and you're gonna advertise, I think.
So, we said.
That's all I have.
When we said the policies, I did give a couple of the policies to both girls and both helpers. Discussing with them, I did ask them to use discretion. It is at their discretion, because those are the rules, if they pick up the extra makers. Now, you can't expect for them to pick them up every time, but like you said, holidays and different things like that, and you can expect them to pick it up. But other than that, they don't have to, and that's in the rules. So it shouldn't be anyone complaining, because the rules have been set out by you guys as well, you approve them, so we can't expect them to pick them up, because they don't have to. For, uh, we didn't have another meeting coming up, so Chris is gonna be out from the second to the thirteenth. Um, the call will agree to work, because I think it a meeting call for just to hire a part-time worker for just a weekend and a half. So since he's part-time driver, he agreed to do part-time health position while Chris is out. Uh, anything else you guys, you, you say was, we got one of these?
Oh, yeah, you coming pretty good, but, but I did have one.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I have one other thing. The truck's being serviced, so Mr. Goshere's truck is in need for a oil change, because he's been running it more so. Now, I did email you guys about, um, Clint and his position as the county mechanic, is he going to service the truck? Or do the trucks need to go back to where they came from? From my understanding, he's a county mechanic, so we should service them all, right? Or do I need to make an appointment to give them service?
That's correct, that's correct.
Well, that's why I said we can.
And I explained it, I explained it to Clint that he would be paid out of solid waste salary, I mean, out of solid waste budget for, but he asked me to go to Jason. So I never heard a thing goes back, so I still need to know, because his truck will probably need an oil change within the next two weeks, because he's close to his seven thousand miles.
Just one other thing, the guy's.
Well, 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 let's hold on, well, he's got asphalt portion. That's correct, just, we hire him on, and 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 all the services, whatever you need for that garbage truck, it will come out of your budget. When we split, he's the, he's the county, he's the county mechanic, so.
Can I say that's on you? Yes, I know, thank you. There may be some things, though, he may not be able to do with that truck, depending on what it is. You know, I mean, maybe some oil change and stuff like that, go regular stuff like that, you had to try to handle. But, you know, we don't really have the capabilities right now of lifting that truck up or some of the other stuff that might require, might be better served by the, the dealer.
Yeah, but we're just gonna run a oil change for now.
Well, what, how many miles is the truck supposed to have oil change at?
Twenty-seven eighteen.
That's what it, you said that, is that the manual? I mean, and that probably needs to be figured out too, because I know when it first came up, one was saying that the, the oil needed changed.
Yeah, but he said it then, it was under like four thousand miles, but I'm just saying, yeah. But we still need to have a plan and action, because they will eventually need change in regards of where the miles are now, just going forward, we need to know. So I would need to know in case I need to call the dealer, or if I know that Clint can do it out there, like, that's my only issue, I just need to know so I can make a plan. Like, that's my only issue, I just need to know so I can make a plan.
I'm just saying, drivers need to have a clear understanding of what miles, what the service intervals are and not just say, you know, it used to be everybody got oil change at three thousand. Now, some of the bigger trucks we have, it's like fifteen and twenty thousand miles between oil changes. So we don't want to be doing the three thousand, you know, every three thousand miles, five thousand miles if it's fifteen thousand.
Well, it's seventeen for those trucks, so they should, you know, so you know.
I I think it's a little trying to establish protocol. If we establish protocol regardless of this nine thousand, we just need protocol established right now.
They see.
I think that's all for that.
I have a question to the officials. Why these trucks are warranted, want the dealer to do it while they're on the warranty? And then comes, there's nowhere here, Clint can't do something either, he'll, he gonna recommend it go to the oil players or whatever, deals and uh lots of computer stuff he don't have, you know, but the thing here, do y'all want Clint to change the oil? Or do you want this under a warrant to do under uh dealer to?
Would a car person bother from it and ask what they recommend, take it to the dealer, uh, that our mechanic is gonna oil it, water it, tone it, uh, whatever it may be. I think doing that, she trying to establish a protocol and when we're gonna take the truck, we can't decide right now, but I'm I'm a long move, Mark, right? So it's not gonna decide right now.
I think if this first year, everything is under warranty, at least for a year, I don't know how long the warranty is. Do you need to look at the warranty and see what the warranty is? But everything else, it takes like a thing that's over, wire something, and it should be under warranty for a certain period of time. Find out what the warranty is, for oil changes, let's make sure they record it in the records in the truck, you know, just for warranty purposes. You know, when we do change it, it keeps some stuff going uh like that, but uh, let's look at the warranty, see what the warranty required. But everything else should go to warranty, going to keep these trucks, we going to go out and work on it.
I guess. I guess.
Take it to the dealer. What other policy you want, you change, see what they refer and then you know.
Where's the dealer, now, where is the dealer, what dealer?
Where you got from? Pretty much the dealer.
Yeah, that's, yeah, let them service the dealer, okay, for right now.
Now, the idea is, y'all are building, I believe.
That's what it is.
But now you got some deals in my, I already have established something, deals are, that'll be closely trying to be there. Don't. That's what y'all want her to do, that's what she asked, so she went over with it.
That's true.
That's gonna serve.
And just change the warranty too.
But it's still a warranty for one, and go here.
What they calling for.
Yeah, she'll, she'll check it. Anything else.
Yeah, one more thing, the dollar that uh was negotiated higher, we said seventeen dollars a year, with a dollar after thirty days. And the cop after the thirty days also, uh, the driver, we hired him in our meeting, a dollar after thirty days, they mentioned that dollar.
They changed it now.
Yeah, they changed it, yeah, we didn't change it now a minute, so we hired him. At a thing, probationary period changed from six to ninety or whatever. Probationary period changed, but our commitment to what we were doing, they changed.
So was that, I would love to appreciate the change for everyone for ninety days.
That's a probationary period, but the raises that we established, which we hired them under a certain condition to be signed up for this, for this, that stays.
The order, the orders that we need to do it, uh, ninety days and six, uh, federal. So we going to walk the orders.
I have one thing to do with the salary, probation of salary, different things. Say the salary, we hired him that, but he said that, and it's in the minutes, but we hired him that, we gonna give you a dollar after thirty days, that's what we said. And that, that's to be, that's to be dealt with, that's, that's the law on that. That's in the minutes, that's the law on that. And then you put a probation later on, then they have a probationary period for till ninety days and establish one, that's after the fact.
So they decided not to apply for everyone?
Probationary period is salaries, huh?
No, I'm saying the salary didn't not apply for everyone because for me, I was told ninety days. But then if it was the drop of thirty days, it shouldn't have been sent across the board.
You will have, what, so you have.
Yeah, because I thought I came back and changed.
No, they, that.
For all the purpose.
We did.
Okay.
We need to change, and if it's changed, it's in the minutes where we change that, it's not in the minutes.
Okay, if, if, if we come after, we came, we talked with lead the association, she said.
You need to change salary, same probationary period, what time, what kind of prior, period we gonna use for probation. Right, that's what we talked about.
For the increase, yeah, for the increase, that change.
The minutes, I tell you a story, just review it, and don't I look at the minutes? Follow the, the law, the minutes are law. Follow the minutes on it, and let's see the minutes and look at it to be clear, because I'm not clear on that. And they asked about, when you hired, you said you gonna do this, and you come back and say, okay, now, we can, we gonna change.
We started off as well, so we didn't ask anybody to be started, it's like, it's six today, sir.
I make, I make motion to adjourn.
I just said, oh, going off again.
Yeah, I'm motion.
Yeah, motion to adjourn, I think by the law.
Second.
Second by, all in favor?
Uh, uh, that would be a good minutes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Now we can look at the minutes.